All the special board meeting to order, please stand for a pledge allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. About a quick point.
Trustee Bell?
Here.
Trustee Brewer?
Here.
Trustee Durant?
Trustee Tetchy?
Here.
Trustee Todd?
Here.
Trustee Lee?
Here.
Um, there's a guest ordinance approving the annual budget appropriation for corporate purposes for the villages of all villages. Two questions. To the board, I guess the board came up with this. I thought the last meeting, the last time we had a meeting, I thought it was on the 19th. So, I'm not sure what transpired between last meeting and now. I've seen some figures, but there are some questions about some of the things, and I'm just wondering who on the board would be able to answer these questions? And my first question is, when did the board meet to go over this budget and to extract and add different items? Because the last thing I, we had talked about as a board, that we were going to have a meeting on the 19th and talk to the department heads. No one has, um, no one has any input on the, I guess, the new budget? Second question, when did you come up with the meeting? That has transpired, if you met and to transpire to get these amounts even removed or added to the different departments? When did that take, when did that take place?
Mr. Mayor, I don't think you made a full motion yet?
No, I didn't make a motion. I'm asking a question before we get to the motion.
I thought, I thought questions came after the motion.
No, I'm asking a question. You don't want the, the residents to know how you got to these numbers? I'm not asking for a motion yet. I'm asking, how did they get to these numbers? Um, who was involved in takeaways and additions? Because I see some additions, some takeaways. Who was involved in doing that and where would that meet? Before I even get to the point of calling for a motion. I'm just wanting to know how, because the last time, as I stated a few minutes ago, it was supposed to be a meeting with the department heads so you could let them know what you were going to add or take away from them. Um, so obviously that meeting didn't happen with the department head, so who met and how did they come up with these numbers to extract and add to the budget? Because the last budget I, I saw didn't have all this until, until this one came about.
Mr. Mayor, last, uh, last board meeting, Trustee Bell gave Administrator Williams what the more money with the budget, and that's what we are going to approve tonight.
So, when did, okay, so when was and how did they come up with those numbers? I'm sure Trustee Bell did come up with those numbers by himself. So, how did they, how did those numbers? Who had a meeting to come up with those? We're talking about transparency. Who came up with those numbers? I'm just asking a question. How did these numbers come about?
Sir, the way I believe we did it is, as, as I went through and added and subtracted, as we went, as, as, as this was here, basically six months. We did it six months.
Who's way?
Myself and Trustee Williams talked about things and...
Oh, so you guys, okay. So, you're saying, so that's all, that's the question I'm asking? So, you and Trustee Williams came up with these numbers?
Majority of the numbers.
He's speaking for himself.
This is my talk. This is me talk. I've had, I've had input, because this is the first budget I've actually had to put together, and this is the way I, the only way I can see financially working for us. I mean, we're going to be in a hole no matter what we do.
Because I'm, the reason why I'm asking, how did these arbitrarily numbers, I mean, these numbers, I'm looking at, and they're removing positions, but you didn't let the department heads know about these positions that you were cutting in that department and the money that was put there. I mean, there's a lot of things to go into it, because there's money that was promised then before this board even took place from last year from the sale of the land that they were, they were able to take the money, some of the money, and do as I call a wish list that they were promised to do, and that was, that was voted out by the last board to do that. Now, I'm hearing that there's nothing that they, they can't do anymore, and, um, I'm just wondering, how did that come about? And now, you're saying that you and Trustee Williams, and Trustee Williams just said that's you talking?
Me talk.
Okay. But you're saying you and Trustee Williams sat down and came up with these numbers, and I'm just wondering why the rest of us were had, didn't have any input in that? I'll put it this way. I didn't have, I, I didn't know anything about it, so I don't know about the rest.
I, I, I work kind of during the day when I'm, you know, on my free time. That's how I work.
And, and your numbers were based on, the numbers that, these numbers that were here are based on?
The, the leashes that we, we talked about. We've talked about administrative job going away.
I never talked, no, okay, but I never talked about some of these things. You're talking about lease positions, the part-time positions being removed from the police department.
We were trying to fill the deficit here every time it was announced, correct?
Okay, but, but you're going to do that with 4,900? You got one in here for 4,900, that's really going...
And that's happened with salary difference.
That's okay, but that's, that's really not going to, that's what he put in there. But what I'm asking is, at least you could let the different departments know that you were reducing whatever it is, and that's why I thought the meeting was going to be on the 19th. But I understand, if you guys had a meeting and, and said that you wanted to remove this without letting the department head know that you were taking away certain positions, I just, and then certain repairs, um...
Mr. Mayor? I'm just going to make one statement, that trustees did not make all of those cuts. The finance director was involved in many of those cuts after speaking with the department heads. We have a budget that is severely, severely in a deficit, and it has been for many, many years, and it continues year after year. We have talked, we have talked, and we have talked, and nothing's getting done. A couple committee meetings ago, the board was put on task, bring us a number. Tell us what you want to do. We brought you a number. This is what we want to do. We'd like to have a motion and a second to approve this budget. Budgets aren't paper. Budgets can always be amended. If everybody who had a wish list didn't get their wish list taken care of up until now, they can go to the finance director and we can amend the budget. Today, we want to pass a budget. It's six months into the budget, so we can talk about it today, again, tomorrow, again, on the 19th, again. We're not going to agree. And when you say, your biggest thing is, how did you meet? Where did you meet? Who met? We all met individually and came up with what the number that you asked us for. We don't have to meet in a room to get things done. We can actually discuss and come up with a consensus one by one. That's what we did, and that's how we got to this number that we were asked to present. And today, we are presenting a budget, and we would like to pass this budget. If anybody has any concerns with this budget after it passes, then it can be brought to the table in the form of a budget amendment.
Thank you for that information. I appreciate that. However, however, I would have thought you would have brought it to the department heads and let them know what you were cutting, number one. Number two, you're saying that you have a number that no budget was balanced up until now. I, I disagree with that.
I never said that.
You said that you never had a budget.
I said, we've had budget deficits, Mr. Mayor.
You're going to repeat what I say, then you should repeat what I say.
I said, the budgets have been in deficit for many years. I'm not referring to anybody's budget but this one. This is the only budget I've been involved in, and it has a severe deficit, and we're not through being in a deficit. We're going to be even in a bigger deficit after today, and unless we decide to try to keep from cutting, the worse it's going to be. And we did not take the police people out of the budget. That was done without us even knowing about it. There were several cuts that were made without the board even knowing about it. The budget has changed numerous times, numerous times, without the board even knowing about it. But again, Mr. Mayor, there, we would prefer that you call a motion and a second so we can pass this budget. We don't have a lot of time. We have the end of the year that we need to be concerned about. And if you want to change the budget later, then you can come to the board with an amendment.
First of all, Trustee, are you speaking for every one of the things like you? I haven't heard anybody else.
I'm speaking for myself, Mr. Mayor. My voice.
Okay, fine. You're asking to pass a budget that you claim someone removed and you didn't do this. Then why can, why was there not a meeting? Why was there not, I mean, I'm, you're talking about closed doors. This is more, I've never seen this before, because some of the things that are on here, it seems that it doesn't even make sense, but this is what, this is what the board wants to pass. This is what the board wants to put in and put out there for that reason, and the board is in agreement with this. All I'm asking is, when would you individually, individually, you passed this around to every board member to agree on it, but you didn't disseminate this to myself, to the clerk, or to the department heads that involved in this? This didn't go to the, to the, to the department heads that it's going to actually affect? They could tell you why or why not, they cannot do, or what it's going to impact by doing this? It's going to be a lot. I mean, there's things in here that I'm trying to add, I'm trying to figure out, so you're asking to pass this budget? First time looking at it, first time I've seen it, and with the necessity, these cuts without any, any discussion? And now, you're saying that you want the, um, come back with an amendment? Why would this, if this amendment's going to be decided on the board that passed it, that doesn't make, I don't understand that. That's closing the door after the question got out. So, I'm just asking, because there's some things on here that I don't understand, and I just wanted to ask some questions about it. But basically, you're saying that you want to pass it without questions being asked? Is that what I'm hearing, Trustee, that you want to pass this budget without talking about the additions, those contractions on the budget?
Mr. Mayor, I never one time said that you can...
I'm asking a question.
Mr. Mayor, I'm answering your question.
Pardon me?
I'm answering your question, but you cut me off as you choose to do very many times. Yes, good gracious.
Yep.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, I'm trying to answer your question if you don't cut me off. I never said you couldn't ask a question. Please do, ask all the questions you want before we pass this budget. We have asked questions. We have amended the budget. We have at least nine versions of this budget. At some point, you have to bite the bullet and pass a budget. Now, you can poll your board members, which is actually what the voting process is all about, but if you want to discuss it, you take a motion and a second, open it up for discussion, and then vote. That is the way it is supposed to be done, but you want to open up discussion before you even call for a motion. Now, last Tuesday, after the meeting, there was a manila envelope passed over to the village administrator, and in that manila envelope, there was these changes that we were, we were recommending, and we asked that the budget be adjusted and that everyone, including the staff and the trustees and the public, had that copy made available to them. Once again, the trustees have made a request that has fallen on deaf ears. If we have to take it upon ourselves to do what we have to do to get it done, this is what we will do, and we will pass a budget tonight if you will call the motion. Ask all the questions you want, Mr. Mayor. You can come to this board anytime. The problem is, you're not open and transparent. We can't talk to you. It gets into an argument, we need to pass the budget. And if you look at the manila envelope that somebody still probably has somewhere, or I can email to you the contents of that envelope, it was very specific. These are the changes that the board wants to pass the budget based off of your budget, and there was a dollar amount, and everybody was supposed to get it Thursday morning. That didn't happen. That's not the trustee's responsibility to make sure that happens, but therefore, it's the trustee's responsibility to pass the budget. And all we keep hearing is, the trustees aren't passing a budget. It's the trustee's fault why we don't have a budget. Well, Mr. Mayor, I'm asking you to respect this board by calling a motion and a second, and let's pass this budget. You can discuss it from now until whenever you feel comfortable, and we'll never have a budget. So, I would say, Mr. Mayor, in my opinion, please, call the motion, call the roll. If you want to discuss it, we're here to discuss.
Thank you. I appreciate your, again, helping and trying to tell me what I should do. I appreciate that, but, um...
Some of the heads too.
You, you guys have, and I'll say you guys, because you said everybody was involved in, have you moved positions that are very...
Yeah, the call motion.
There, um, that were very important to the operation of the village, and I'm just trying to figure out, what is your plan once you move these, or remove these particular, I know it's hard, but it's just hard when, when, when you don't have a chance to go over anything or talk about anything, unless you do it between yourselves and don't, but you're saying, I'm stopping. So, it's okay to pass something that I just saw for the first time, and that's fine to do that, but then you're saying, I'm trying to be, um, not transparent. Okay. So, I do have some questions, and I'm going to ask some questions so I can kind of understand, because this is what's going to happen when we don't have people. What's the removal of the Director of Economic and Development? Remove, um, that particular, what's the reason that you're moving, removing that? For 34,000. 34,000 removed from the Director of Economic and the Community Development. So, are you cutting her salary by 34,000 dollars?
Okay. To the residents, who I am so sorry that this has taken six months to answer, and to the mayor, let me make it perfectly clear.
You're going to be...
We are, you asked me, you asked a question, Mr. Mayor.
No, I asked a question, Trustee. I understand.
I'm asking a question.
No, no.
You don't want to listen.
But, but no, I don't want to listen.
I'm trying to answer your question.
No, Trustee, you're, you're trying to take control. That's what, because you can't have your way, so that's what you do. I asked a question. I asked a question. All I'm doing was asking, who can answer that question? If everybody was involved in doing this, somebody can answer this question. And as far as me holding the, the, the budget up, I said last week and week before last, had I not, the reason why I held, and I'm going to make this perfectly, perfectly clear, the reason why the budget wasn't done in April, because I was giving the new boards that was coming in a chance to look over the budget. We could have passed this at the end of April, but I said, no, I'll let the new board come in and look at it and give their approval, which took another six months. So, to say that I could have done this back in that time, probably could have, but now back and forth, back and forth, back and forth, you still got what you want. All I'm asking is, now you want to rush this through, you don't want to answer these questions, and you don't want, you just want to do this so you can say, bam, there it is, and here we go. So, I don't, I think the residents, as you said, the residents here, I think they deserve to know why things are being the way they are, why things are being cut, what services are going to be cut before they're voting on, before things happen. I think they need to know why these things are happening. That's all I'm asking. Someone sat down and said, okay, we're going to cut this. Fine, why? Don't just arbitrarily put numbers on a piece of paper and let's go with that, and that's what the budget, anybody can do that. Anybody can sit up there and pack. I'm looking at some of these things that were cut that makes sense or don't make sense, and you're adding things on here that, that I don't understand, and all I'm asking is, if you had the meeting, somebody somewhere said, let's, let's cut this, why? I guess no one asked why, I don't know, but I'm asking why are we cutting that particular one, and then there's other ones that I'm looking at to find out why we're removing that? The first one I said, Director of Economic and Community Development. Why are we cutting 34,000 out of that? Why did we, why did we remove $70,000 from the part-time police open position? How can you add 24,000 to public works overtime? How would you know how much that is? I mean, how can you guesstimate, I guess that's what it's called, that you're going to, so if it gets to 25,000, we can tell them that can't work, or they have to come back before the board, they ask, can they get some overtime? The repairs on the fire station were done, why, who, who made that decision? Okay, so you said the treasurer. I'm looking here, says treasurer. How can you, um, remove the 25,000 dollars from the police administrator assistant? There was never, he didn't get it, so therefore, that, that one I can understand because he never got it. The other one was the front desk position that was never filled. But the, um, public works position, why was that removed? So, we, we have a person that's down in public works, the open position, why did they remove that? So, you, you, you're doing that for what reason? And what was the reason why you reduced the fire chief's salary in half? You ready to, anybody want to answer those questions?
Sorry, I have a question.
No, no, well, I, I can't. I mean, no, not right now. It's question time, yes. I'm asking the board a question right now, just to pick a point.
She tried to answer.
Oh, now, there's one here for village hall repairs. I never asked for 20,000 dollars for village hall repairs, unless it's something, never asked for that to be added to the budget. That's the unit that needs to be repaired. I mean, it, what we just don't have heat. I mean, so that's why that was there. I mean, it wasn't, I didn't ask, I did not ask that to put that in the budget, but nobody seems to be able to answer none of these questions.
Well, it was in the first budget, because we wrote it all out. Whatever needed to be done was in the very first budget that we ever did.
Then why didn't you all ask Kevin Weller about the 20,000 or whatever it was for the, for the, uh, the unit? I mean, that's why I said, some of this stuff here, why didn't you talk to the, I'm sorry, the, the department heads to find out about some of these?
When they had, when we had the department head meeting, I mean, we've got nine budgets sitting in front of us, so the very first time we had, I think it was the very first time we had a budget hearing, and we went through this, and I'd have to pull it, but we would write off to the side, okay? If it was the fire department, they need 100,000 dollars because they need a new roof or they need a, whatever. That was all written out. But as we started going through these budget hearings, and when it got to certain things, it went out of control, and we didn't have another budget hearing. Now, with some of these things that you're talking about, we did not remove from here. You would want to talk to the finance director. We'd, we'd get this budget, look and see, oh, that's, that's gone, and that's gone, and it's not something that was ever recommended. And as we said last week, if it was last week, that there were changes that we wanted to see done, and it's been like this for months, and we were ignored as, as to what needed to be done, certain cuts that needed to be done. I wish the finance director was here, because there's things that were taken out of this budget that we did not request to be taken out of the budget.
Okay, and I appreciate that, Trustee. So, what I'm asking is, the things that I just got through asking, none of these things were taken out by the trustees, I guess?
There's several things that were not taken out.
Okay, I'm saying, the things that I asked, the questions that I asked were not, these were not deletions by this board.
When it came to like the fire department, well, the police department, we'll use that, that stuff was taken out. We did not request that.
Okay, okay, and then, um, so, I mean, I said, reduce the fire salary. You didn't request that?
For the chief?
Yes, fire chief.
That was requested a long time ago, and it's been in the last three budgets. I've seen that it's at 35,000.
Trustee, trustees did do that?
I want to say it's the last three budgets I seen that it was in half.
Okay, Director of Economic and Community Development, 34,000. Did the trustees do that?
Director of Economic Development, you do not need a Director of...
Okay, so the 34,000 removed from Director of Economic and the Community Development, uh, who, who, is that done also by the treasurer?
No.
Oh, that was done by the board?
Correct.
And the reason?
When it comes to an economic development director, at this time, I don't think we need one. We have a village administrator, um, paying 68,000 dollars for economic development director. Right now, you have an interim. We don't feel you need an economic development director at this time. You can utilize the village administrator. It's something in the role that you could go into. I know that...
Who?
Mr. Mayor, you've done economic development.
Okay.
So, you're capable of doing that. So, to save 68,000 dollars, we're removing, we want it removed.
Okay, Mike, and I'm glad you said, because that's what you saw on outside 394 did not come just solely by myself. That's a lot of work, so, um, to have, not have somebody on that full time or whatever, trying to get a store, so you're going to have, who's going to pursue that? I don't understand, but, so, um, but, but to, but to take that money out and expect someone to continue, I mean, the job for economic development is a job that basically goes almost full time. If you're going, you're meeting, you're talking, you're back and forth with meetings, you're talking to people, you're going downtown, you're going to do all kinds of things just to get people interested in what you're trying to do. You've got to be with a lot of people. So, to say that, that's part of my job?
No, I said...
I'm only, I'm only there when it, when they actually, when they actually got somebody, but in order to get somebody, then you have to have somebody that's on top of that.
And we have a village administrator.
But the village administrator is, 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 is not going to be able to go up and down and, okay, but now, so the village administrator is going to do that and, and human resources, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Okay, and then, and then, what's the reason for 4,900 dollars for removal of the assistant? What was the reason for that? I'm sure the board, the board, I do know the board wanted that, so what's the reason for that? That's all I'm asking.
Well, Mr. Mayor, the removal of your assistant is because there has been no mayor that's ever had an assistant, and it is at a cost of 11,645 dollars. The 4,900 is what she's been paid thus far, was what I'm understanding.
Where do you see 11,000? Because the salary is 9,600. That's what a salary, no, the salary is 9,600 dollars a year, so that's roughly 700 dollars a month for somebody to come in here every day and not only just help me, or if you do, if you go around, if you even ask your village administrator, ask him what she does every day. You see that she does more than she does for you? She, she asks, she takes it? I know, maybe. I mean, we, we can all, we can, we can do this if that's what you want to do. I'm just asking a question, but I'm just saying, that position that you're cutting, now you're going to cut, I mean, a person that doesn't... I mean, a person that does more than this assistant myself. They assist everything that goes on in this village, on this side, I mean, uh, in this village hall. So if you came to see, I mean, I... Because I think, myself, I think it's something different, but you're saying that you want to cut ninety-six hundred dollars, and that's gonna really save us some money? Okay. What was the reason that you don't want to hire a position that was open for the public works? Who made that decision? The public works open position for fifty-nine hundred, fifty-nine dollars. That position was vacant, been vacant for almost a year and a half now. And the public works director told me that he's trying to get the person that he feels would be right for that job, just not hire anybody. And that was the reason why he hasn't filled it yet. So why didn't you take that out of the budget? And then also adding twenty-four thousand for director of public of buildings and codes? You're creating another position, or what? Because community economic... Community development and economic development, the same person that's in charge of codes. So what is the twenty-four thousand for director of building and code? What position is that?
Where's that at? What page?
Don't y'all remember doing this?
Mr. Mayor, can I speak without getting rudely interrupted?
Why do you keep saying that?
Because you rudely interrupt me every time I say something.
I know, I haven't... You just want to see... Now, now you're being... Now you're really being...
Mr. Mayor, the last three times I tried to speak, you cut me off. May I speak? I can answer your question if you would recognize me without cutting me off.
Where is the, um... Yeah, I can't forget, but I'm seeing, I think, the twenty-four thousand. Oh, I see.
Trustee, if I were else to want to, I'm not... I'm not holding up the... They do it anyway, so what do you have to say, trustee, or boy? I'm not holding you up, it's all...
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The budget is a full-year budget, and we've gone through half of a year. So what you see is, for some positions, the half-year has already been expended. And in some positions, it has been created. So you have to add in six months of positions that are new to the budget. But you also have to show the expense for the first six months for positions that have already been expended. This is a one-year budget. I know it's hard to read it, because it's... We're actually six months into a full-year budget. But when you look at it, you have to look at it as a full-year budget. If you are eliminating or altering a position, such as you mentioned, the fire chief, if you alter his position from one salary to another, you have to account for six months, the salary at one amount, and for six months, the salary with a second amount. The budget has to include money that has already been spent, because we're already six months into the budget, and money that needs to be spent moving forward.
Is that the answer to the question I asked? Because the question I asked was, I was asking about the position for... That I don't see on your screen is for the, um, director of building and code.
The director of building and code is not a new position. That position has always been in place. The director of position of building and code at forty-eight thousand dollars would allow for twenty-four thousand dollars to be paid out for the next six months. That's the next six months moving forward for the direct... For the position of director of building and code. As I stated, that did answer your question, because as I stated, that's a six...
Before you go any further, because I... I'm sorry, I don't have, um, memory, like, you know. You're saying that that position, right now, has been filled, is being filled. Director of building and code is being filled.
I said that position has always been in place.
No, I'm asking, you're saying that that position has already been filled. Who is the director of building and code?
Who was the director of building and code?
I said, who is? Who is the director of building and code?
I didn't say that it was currently filled, Mr. Mayor. I said that position is going to be filled with a salary of a half-year of forty-eight thousand. So if you're gonna repeat what I say, would you please repeat what I say correctly? That position will now be at a salary of forty-eight thousand dollars. Whoever wants that position will be getting twenty-four thousand dollars for the next six months. It's not that hard to figure out. You're looking at an annual budget that six months' worth of expenses have already been paid in many instances, such as the air conditioning for this building. Yes, it's in the budget. Yes, we talked about it, because, yes, we had to fix it before the budget was prepared.
Again, trustee. Again, I'm asking you, how and when did this position get added to the budget? Director of... This has always been there. Who currently owns or holds that position as director of building and code? Who currently holds that position?
Nobody currently owns it. We're trying to put somebody in that position.
Oh, and that's all I ask. You're trying to create that position.
No, that position has never been uncreated. It has never been un... We had a person in that position. That person was eliminated, but the job was never eliminated. That position was never eliminated. That position is still in place. Now, you're trying to get me to say something that I'm not going to say, but I am going to say that there's perfectly good reason why you need to... That position was never eliminated by ordinance. Therefore, it's still a position that this village has always had. So, that's the answer to your question?
No, it's not.
Okay, well, I can't answer your question, Mr. Mayor. I wouldn't agree with you if you call me a machine.
I'm asking a simple question. By you talking slow doesn't mean that it's gonna be any brighter than what you said before. I asked, who currently holds that position as director of building and code? You said it's never been... It's never been, um, eliminated. Okay. So now, you want to bring that position back to someone, and you want to offer that position to someone at forty-eight thousand dollars a year? Is that correct?
Yes.
I know, it's a joke. Everybody feels it, but this is people's monies and lives. If you do not like what I'm saying, please, please, if you don't like my... I'm trying to conduct business. I'm not... I'm not trying to put a show on. I'm asking questions that are pertinent for people's money, for this village to move forward. Some of you may not feel that way, but I'm so sorry. But I need to ask these questions. So when I'm asked, why these positions were either eliminated or added, why was this money taken away or added? I can intelligently answer other than I don't know. Because I don't know why some of these were done. That's why I'm asking these questions. But if you don't want the answers, I'm sorry, but I'm... That's my job to do that, to ask and find out why things were taken out. What? Sixty-five thousand dollars for manhole covers? What is that? What is that, brother? That... I just want to know.
That's the mandate that we've been informed that we need to put in the budget, Mr. Mayor? We've been informed...
Manhole covers?
Mandate, yes, sir.
Man...
Yes, sir. It's a mandate from the government that we've all been told.
A mandate?
Oh, crap.
Blame that on the trustees, too.
See, that's what I'm talking about. See, you want to play... Trustee, you want to... You know, this is a shame. I mean, you could, you know, you think it's a game. Manhole covers were not a mandate. The manhole covers were not a mandate. And the money that was... That was in, uh, increased for the sewer was something to do other than the manhole covers. If you came to that meeting, rather than sit here and try to guess what's happening, it was to do with trying to eliminate the amount of salt that goes into our... Into our sewer lines. That's what it was for, to eliminate...
The trustees did not put that in the budget. Your finance director did. If you have a question about that sixty-five thousand dollars, then you need to talk to your finance director. The trustees are not responsible for every line item in this budget. And I firmly believe the reason why you didn't pass this budget in April is because you didn't want your old board to have to go through what this new board is doing and trying to make...
Now, now, you're... You're being facetious, trustee.
I am not being facetious.
Yes, you are.
I am serious. We need a budget that would be...
You're not serious.
You're not calling for the motion.
If you were serious, trustee, you would have somebody... You could have talked about this. You're not serious. You want somebody to pass something that you guys set up in the back room, came up with, and said you want to do this. Nobody else had any input. Nobody had any input on this. None of the people that affected had any input. We can yell, cry, stomp feet, whatever. You can do all you want, but still remains, the fact is, what you're doing here is wrong. By trying to pass something and slide it on through without asking... Nobody asking any question.
Mr. Grant? Did we ask your opinion?
Why are you asking, Mr. Grant?
Did we ask your opinion? Have we spoken with you about your opinions on this budget?
No, you see, now who's trying to run the...
No, you said nobody's input. Nobody... Everybody on the board, let's speak up. We got fifteen minutes in the next meeting. Who's had input on this budget?
I have. I have.
When I asked that question, nobody answered. I asked that same question. Who had something to do with formulating this budget? I got crickets.
Well, stop being crickets, everybody.
I asked the question to the whole board, trustee, and I didn't get an answer. We sat there and looked for ten minutes. I said, who had input in doing this budget? I thought the last time, as I stated, we were supposed to talk about this with the department heads on the nineteenth of October. Now, miraculously, just came up with all these additions and subtractions without any explanation, and you feel that is correct. That's great. Here it is. Do what you gotta do with it. Let's move on. Let's go on, and don't even... Don't even explain why you did what you did. Is that what this board wants to do? Obviously so? Because that's what it's doing. You're asking me to call for emotional something that wasn't even discussed? We didn't even have a chance to discuss it. If I continue to keep getting comments out of the other, I'm gonna ask you to leave. Because this... Yes, I will. I'm gonna ask you to leave. That doesn't make sense. I'm not... I'm not talking to the audience. If you want to continue to go back and forth and blurt out in the audience, you have a chance for public comments. You have a chance for that. So anyway, I'm asking, so you're telling me that certain people have certain... Okay. I still ask the question about public works? Overtime? Who came up with that number?
Actually, the finance director had a lesser number for overtime. We asked to have it increased, because we feel public works needs more than twenty thousand dollars worth of overtime in each department. So we asked him to increase it by ten. And the additional... The additional money in there is benefits. When you see a line item for a salary, you have to include the social security or any type of, um, health benefits or whatever is involved in there. So, yes, we will take credit for that extra overtime in public works, because it was actually decreased by ten thousand each in both departments. But we weren't satisfied with that. We wanted more in public works.
Okay, so you're saying with the addition of the director of building code, building and code, that you're going to eliminate the position of economic development and, I'm sorry, community development, even though those were, um, voted on, uh, with the ordinance? Is that what I'm saying? Because I see something for the next meeting for that reason. So I'm asking, is that what that is? That you're going to, um, create... Well, fill the position of director of building and code and eliminate the other position? That's why it was taken out? That's all I'm asking. Anybody can ask that?
Yes, it's...
And so I can be perfectly clear, trustee, William, you made the statement that the fire chief is thirty-five thousand you have in there, but that's only for, um, a six-month period? So therefore, next... Or that's for a four-year period?
Mr. Finch was supposed to adjust that for the first six months of the year when he was working at a salary of over seventy thousand. Okay, that was supposed to be adjusted. The current salary for this year's budget will be thirty-five thousand. Like I said, if there is an error in that particular line item, it can be done in the form of an amendment. That should not hold the budget up. These trustees have been accused over and over again of not passing a budget, Mr. Mayor. Can we please pass the budget?
Because you want to pass the budget without nobody asking any question. You want to pass the budget, you want to throw numbers out there arbitrarily and just say pass it?
That position has been in the budget like that through the last six...
Who's interrupting you now?
That position has been in the budget for the last three or four revisions, and you have yet to question it. Now you're questioning it.
I didn't question anything, because I'm waiting on the final budget. This is what you got here, so I'm asking this question. So you're saying that the fire chief's salary for a year is thirty-five thousand? As we go on right now, even though they've gotten that much already, so therefore, basically, what you're saying is the fire chief's got thirty-five already, that they don't get anything from here to the end of the year?
Can I answer your question, Mr. Mayor?
I'm just asking. You said it's six months.
I'm asking you a question in order to answer your question. The budget that you presented on September twenty-sixth, that you were okay... The budget that was presented on September twenty-sixth, that you gave... You gave your approval.
No, I did not present a budget, no, trustee, don't say that.
You didn't give your approval and say you were...
No, I did not, no. I did not give my approval on any budget, no matter.
I can't argue with you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, well, I'm telling you, don't tell that lie, because I did not present a budget.
The fire chief's salary has been the same in the last few budgets. If you didn't do it on September twenty-sixth, you did do it on September fifth. You said you approved this budget. You are okay with this budget. And I am not mistaking it, I bet my life on it.
Okay.
Thirty-five thousand dollars was in that budget. It's been in the last several budgets. You never questioned it before with budgets that you had approved.
I didn't approve a budget, trustee? Why do you keep saying I approved the budget? I did not approve a budget. It hasn't even been voted on. How can I approve a budget that hasn't been voted on? I didn't approve a budget that was presented.
You gave your approval to...
That's what you said.
With the budget that was...
That's what you said.
And that budget was put on display at the village hall for residents to see. And in that budget, it had a salary of thirty-five thousand for the fire chief. You did not question it then. You were okay with presenting that budget on September fifth.
How do you know when I was okay, but trustee? I didn't tell you anything. Show me where I said I said okay. Show me where that said... Where is that stated, that I said okay for any budget? I did not say okay. It was presented, just like this one right here. This was presented. When did you... When did you put this in for the residents to see this that you want to pass right now? When was this put in place so residents can see the cuts and the additions and everything else that's on this piece of paper? When was that brought to the residents so they can see exactly what's being deleted? When was that... When was that done? When was that available when?
We left instructions for it to be out on the public on Thursday afternoon, Mr. Mayor.
Thursday? I just got this yesterday.
We left instructions after we passed off our changes that everybody, including the staff, I'll repeat it because I said it before, the staff, the department heads, the trustees, and the residents should have a completed copy out front and ready for availability for review. We cannot work everybody's job. We are the trustees. We put it in motion. We asked it to be done. But again, whatever the trustees are asking for, let's not do this. Let's just not.
I'm asking you, when did you put this out for... Because it was really talked about when the other one wasn't put out there. When did you put this out for viewing? When did the people have a chance to look at this?
It was told to go out Thursday.
By who?
It was told by us to have the people that work in the office to get it out there by Thursday.
People in the office didn't get a copy of it. I just got a copy yesterday. Oh, the village manager was instructed to put this out there. Okay. Okay, well, I didn't see it.
Apparently, we're just never going to pass the budget and we're just going to keep going.
No, I said, hey. Go. And then I think that the last thing I had, I asked the question, who... I did not okay this particular meeting, but it was put in there that this meeting was called by myself, though it wasn't. So this meeting was called, I guess, by the trustees. So I did not, I did not call it. I didn't call this meeting? There was, the last meeting, I understand the next meeting was going to be on the nineteenth. I didn't know it. I don't know. It was a special meeting called at the last, at the last meeting, last week? I don't know. Okay, well, then I say it correctly. I don't know if I'm calling that. Okay. So a ordinance approving an annual budget appropriations, I guess, is fourteen...
What, Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
So I do have quite a few concerns. I was trying to wait. I was trying to wait for you to take the motion and ask for the questions, but this is pretty important, so I want to kind of bring this up now. Actually, I would like to... Well, I'm just say this and then make some comments later. Can someone tell me the appropriation total? Can somebody tell me that number? So can somebody read me the number? Thank you, Madam Clerk. Now, can trustees, the mayor, clerk, can you go to page, I believe it's seven or eight in the budget? I'm sorry. I'll read it for you, Madam Clerk. So, page, I believe it's a seven. The number for total appropriation at the bottom, everybody see that? Page, so this is the beginning. Page one, two, three, four, five, six. That number is different from what's in the ordinance. The number should be the same. So the number says fourteen million, two hundred and thirty-seven thousand, three hundred and fifty-six. Now, I know we're not gonna... It's not a big number, but it is different. And if we're going to pass something that's for the record, it should be correct. So therefore, I'm asking that we table this to a... No, 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 you don't adjust a figure. No, you don't vote on something knowing it's wrong. That's not right.
And again, another strong tactic.
No, you don't vote on something that you know is wrong.
Trustee, you asked that somebody not interrupt you when you're talking. Please say it the same respect as anyone else is talking.
Same respect.
So, Mr. Mayor, I'm asking that we table this until we get a correct number because the ordinance and the exhibit shouldn't match. It does not match, so we cannot pass them that it doesn't match. It makes no sense.
Mr. Mayor?
Trustee?
Thank you. Again, another instance where the trustees asked, I've been asking since Thursday for the final appropriations number to insert into the ordinance. I was given the number that's in the ordinance. Again, there was some changes apparently made due to salaries that had to be adjusted. I have emails and texts to the finance director since Thursday. Has this number changed? Apparently, thank you, Mr. Grant, it has changed by a few dollars. We can change this ordinance verbally and have it done manually tomorrow. We can read the correct amount and pass this ordinance tonight. This ordinance passes the budget. Now, Mr. Grant, of course, you can ask for a motion to table. That's within your right. But I'm asking that we simply make the motion to pass the budget with this appropriation.
So, Trustee, my question to you would be, how do you know which number is right? Which one? Is it the ordinance number?
I just pulled this out of my box.
It doesn't matter. It should be correct.
And I have to assume this is the latest version.
You can't assume. This is an ordinance for the villages of the village. You cannot, you should not pass something knowing that it's wrong. It just...
Trustee Grant, you just pointed it out. This was the latest budget.
I didn't point this out. I did not point that out.
Just one second. I'm going to ask one more time that we are allowed to conduct business up here. If you guys want to say something, please go out in the hallway and talk. But disrupting this meeting does not make it go any faster. So if you feel that you want to speak about something, please get up and go out to the hallway and talk. But trying to disrupt and mad comments back and forth does what? Go ahead.
I mean, I have more comments, but I just feel like that one at the time is good for now. So I don't know how you want to proceed, knowing that this is wrong. My opinion, we should table it, and I think that we should take a vote on the tabling of that motion, my motion to table.
Mr. Mayor? Mr. Mayor, throughout for the last two and a half years, we have passed stuff and we have made changes as we speak. There's no reason not to pass the budget and initial it and change it to the right amount tomorrow. This has been an ongoing thing since I've been here, since the last two years, we always change stuff. Change issues on any document that comes in here and is not right. That's part of our, the way we've been doing things since day one. So just to hold up this budget, when we've been trying to do this for the last six months, is really another strong tactic. You know, we know what it is. We need to get on and pass this budget.
Trustee, I know you didn't hear what you just said.
Are you doing the...
I'm asking you a question. You just stated that we passed something that we changed.
We always have changed something and then passed it.
I know you didn't. I'm sure that you're the fellow trustees, you're going to agree with that. There's nothing that you pass and then you want to change it, maybe without doing anything, without bringing it to the board? I'm not going to amend that one, but in as far as...
I didn't think you would, but...
No, I won't.
But you know for a fact, you know for a fact that we have made changes and went on and passed whatever changes we had to be made.
Mr. Mayor?
That's common.
Mr. Mayor?
There's nothing new.
No, it's not common to make changes and then pass something.
We have made changes and then went and approved it. That's common.
No, it's not, Trustee.
Okay, I don't know where you've been.
This ordinance has not been passed yet. So, Mr. Mayor, may I be recognized?
I am, Trustee.
This ordinance has not been passed yet. The amount that's typed inside has been brought to our attention, that yet again, the number has changed. We recognize that. This is the last budget of the many that we have received. And it was, I just picked this out of my box just before this meeting. So I can only assume that the actual total appropriations is in fact fourteen million, two hundred... fourteen million, two hundred and thirty-seven thousand, three hundred and fifty-six dollars. So since this ordinance has not been passed yet, I would like to ask you to include in your motion, when the motion is finally made, to read the total appropriations figure of fourteen million, two hundred and thirty-seven thousand, three hundred and fifty-six. That would mean that we are passing an ordinance with the correct appropriations figure. Nobody has seen this document before it is finalized by the clerk and signed by the mayor. It will have the appropriate number. It says right here, fourteen million, two hundred and thirty-seven thousand, three hundred and fifty-six dollars, which is roughly fifty-nine hundred dollars difference than this one. So now we're arguing over fifty-nine hundred dollars.
Arguing over twenty-nine?
And we haven't passed this ordinance yet, so we still have time to amend the body of the content of the ordinance. What I'm asking, Mr. Mayor, is when you do make this motion, you can make the motion, he didn't complete the motion, he just have said it. But when he does, he can complete it by saying, in the amount of, and read the appropriations amount that makes this ordinance valid.
The amount that I see on this is one amount, and then where did the other amount come from? Two hundred and thirty-one thousand?
Two hundred and thirty-seven thousand, three hundred and fifty-six dollars.
No, two hundred and thirty-one thousand. My ordinance doesn't have an amount.
I think there was some place in the box today because the copy machine's been out for a couple of days.
Right.
So I just stopped at my box just before I got here, and it was in there.
Okay, well, I didn't get that one. I got the one that I have is, it doesn't have an amount in there. I was going to ask about that.
Well, the amount is two hundred, no, it's fourteen million, two hundred and thirty-seven thousand, three hundred and fifty-six dollars.
The amount you have is fourteen million, two hundred and thirty-one thousand?
No, I'm sorry, fourteen million, two hundred and thirty-seven thousand, three hundred and fifty-six dollars.
In what? In where?
This is the fire budget that was put in our box today.
Thirty-seven.
But this is thirty-one thousand.
It's not coming here then.
I don't know. That's why I...
You're saying we can't amend the ordinance? Is that what you're saying, Trustee?
I'm not saying that at all. I think that's a question for the clerk.
Madam Clerk, we can adjust the ordinance?
Put the changes in there and let's vote on it.
You amended ordinance once it's been approved. This hasn't been approved yet.
You don't need to amend it, or...
Right.
Now, if, and I was just talking to Trustee Todd, and since I was questioned, I am going to respond. Thank you very much, people. Don't tell me to be quiet. Okay. What I suggested to you at one-thirty on Friday, when you were in the office speaking with the interim finance director and you guys had not solidified anything that you have now, I shared with you that since you did not know the amount, we could not share it in a timely manner with the other trustees. It was my suggestion to you that you forego putting an amount in the actual document and to read it into record at tonight's meeting. Now, that was Friday. That wasn't Thursday. So we definitely want to keep everything in perspective because we want to be honest, upfront, truthful, and I can be a party to that. Prefacing that, I will say, if, just as I told you on Friday, if you read into record exactly the amount, seeing that you've got two varying amounts right now, what's in your budget and what's on the ordinance, read into record exactly the one that is correct. And that's what you would vote on. Okay?
Absolutely. Thank you, Madam Clerk.
Okay, well, there's the ordinance, I mean, there's a ordinance before the board at this time, so...
Could you read the ordinance in motion in its entirety with the...
I suggest that one of you read that you're asking for a court, that you're asking for a motion. You know the figure that you lost in the county. Let's not drive this into question.
If the mayor is allowing one of the trustees to make the motion, I'd be happy to make that motion. At this time, I make a motion that we approve an ordinance approving an annual budget and appropriations for all corporate purposes for the Village of Soft Village, Cook County, Illinois, for the May first, two thousand nineteen, to April thirtieth, two thousand twenty fiscal year in the amount of fourteen million, two hundred and thirty-seven thousand, three hundred and fifty-six dollars. That's the motion.
Second.
No, she moved.
She made the motion.
Oh, I'm sorry, second.
Moved by Trustee Williams and second by Trustee Todd. Any questions?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I have quite a few questions, actually, so I don't know how you want to proceed seeing how it's seven, ten. But I'll just read them off. Hopefully, you can answer them. So some of these have been stated already. I'm going to say it again because this is my time. So I thought that we were going to have a meeting on the nineteenth at nine o'clock with the department heads. That was the last I heard. I haven't heard any different until recently about the special meeting. So I'm not sure what happened there. So can somebody answer me? So the forty-nine hundred dollars that is for the part-time assistant, so does that mean that after this ordinance is passed, that she will no longer be needed? Is that what somebody's saying? No, forty-nine hundred. So after this is passed, does that mean that she is no longer, he or she is no longer needed?
I'm sorry for the confusion, Mr. Grant, Trustee Grant, but you weren't here last Tuesday when we said we were going to have a meeting today to pass the budget. And that question you're asking, just to reiterate the answer to that question, what you're looking at is a full year's budget and some salaries that had, were adjusted are reflected within a full year. So for example, if someone had a salary of ten thousand dollars and it's an annual salary, but they're only going to work half a year, then within the budget, we still have to reflect the five thousand for the year they already worked. So that's where, in some cases, that happened. In other cases, a position may have been eliminated when another position was brought back to life at a different salary. But whatever the case might be, when it comes to salaries, that's the only time that you should see a percentage that's already been expended with a different amount that has to be expended for the next six months. And that's the case in that particular one you spoke about. And there's more than one instance like that. So we already discussed that earlier. Maybe that didn't just quite sink in, but that's what that is. This is an annual budget... Full year appropriations have to be accounted for even though there's changes to the next six months. There have been changes by more than one person, by more than one staff member that have to be reflected in this budget. And any changes that need to be made after the budget is passed should come to the board for discussion and possible amendment once the budget is passed.
I appreciate your, uh, response. I think all questions were directed towards the mayor, so therefore, uh, thank you for giving your response on behalf of the mayor. Um, so, I know, and I know how budgets work, so thank you for clarifying what I already knew. Um, but could you answer me this question then? So if what you said is true about the forty-nine hundred dollars, how half of the expenses has been paid because it's a half a year? So, if you go down to the fire chief for thirty-five thousand dollars, does that mean that after, since he's, it's been a half a year, correct? So, what's gonna happen the second half of the year? Because he's only budgeted thirty-five thousand dollars based on this document right here. So, he currently, his salary was thirty thousand dollars, I mean, I'm sorry, seventy thousand dollars. So thirty-five thousand has already been paid. This is half a year. Where's the second half of the year? Do you get what I'm saying? Does that make sense?
I, I didn't know if you were recognizing me.
I, I can't recognize you. I'm not the mayor. I'm not the mayor. This is
Okay, the, well, that's, that's, goes from the questions I had asked prior to you coming in. And I was told that that was half salary. All they're doing is passing half. In other words, all this is just half.
It makes no sense. I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor.
I, I, I understand that, but this is just half. So that thirty-five thousand dollars that we're talking about is just half salary. So therefore, I guess it would mean that it's seventy thousand dollars a year, even though the last budget I saw said thirty-five thousand, so. Definitely I can tell you about that.
Okay, so, Mr. Mayor, I wanna kinda say this again. If we know the part-time assistant is no longer needed and the budget that says forty-nine hundred dollars, which is what she's been paid for these first six months of the fiscal year, therefore, she has nothing in the salary for the rest of the year because she's not here anymore. Okay, go down to the fire chief. The fire chief currently makes seventy thousand dollars. In the budget, we have thirty-five thousand, which is what he's been paid the first six months of the year. So, does that mean that he's not needed anymore because there's nothing else in the budget for a fire chief for his rest of his salary? It's not there. So you can't, you, you can't say that for one person and not the other person. It, it's, it just doesn't make sense. So, can somebody explain that part to me? Because if that's the case, the fire chief, um, is done. He has nothing else in his salary to make 'cause he already made thirty-five thousand dollars.
That's, that's a great point. Trustee, uh, if you remove thirty-five thousand dollars from that salary, that's what this says, that if you remove thirty-five thousand, then he's already made thirty-five thousand. So if he goes any further, he won't get paid.
That's what I, that's my whole point. So I, I, could somebody clarify that for me? You can't say that for one position and not the other.
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Mayor.
Trustees, I'm sure trustee, I'm Williams.
Mr. Mayor, thank you very much for recognizing me. Uh, I have several texts to, uh, interim finance director Finch telling him that he needed to make that adjustment, that because I noticed that it was only a thirty-five and his salary needs to be adjusted. Every time I send a communication to either the village administrator or the village interim finance director, I have a text or email to back it up. That has definitely gotta be changed, and like I said, in the form of an amendment. This budget does not take place until November. We need to pass the budget in order to amend the budget. And I feel that there have been entirely too many errors in the budget, as I stated before. The budget has lost its integrity. Every time we get the budget, the figures are different. Every time we get the budget, we're, there's things in there that we didn't know were in there. That's all very true. But one thing for sure is, we have a budget on the floor and it's a budget that everybody has input in, including the mayor. We'd like to see it passed tonight, and budget amendments could be forthcoming starting tomorrow. But that was pointed out to the finance director that he needed to adjust the thirty-five thousand to account for the time that he's already spent in that position.
Mr., Mr. Mayor.
Trustee, just, just a second. First of all, I keep saying, I don't know how many times you want me to say it. I had no input in this budget at all. You keep saying, I added this and took that away or whatever. No, I did not. And that's why I was trying to let, you know, I, especially whatever you got here, I had no input. I just found this out the other day, yesterday, as a matter of fact, when I got this, so. Please quit saying that I had input in this budget. I didn't. Trustee, I'm Grant.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, I really don't like the fact that we kinda, when I say we, the trustees are kinda putting the blame on Mr. Finch, who's not here to defend himself. How do you even pass a budget without him here to answer questions that we may have? And/or where is the village administrator in this process? Because if the finance director can't do it, I'm assuming the VA can. So, and then I don't, I don't understand how he isn't here on a night like this. Um, if, you know, especially to answer some of the questions based on the things that, changes that he did make so we can ask him, what did he, why did he make those changes?
Mr. Mayor, I would be happy to answer that one as well. Both the village administrator and the village interim finance director have gotten to the point where they're basically embarrassed by what's going on. They don't wanna be a part of this process any longer. They've basically washed their hands of it. And I can't really say that I don't blame them. I wish it would be that easy for me to wash my hands of it and walk away, but I can't. I have the responsibility of the people to pass the budget, and that's what we're trying to do. But they have set up more than one occasion, both the village administrator and the village finance, interim finance director, that they're not gonna sit here while we argue the reports on a budget. They're just not gonna do it. They've, they've, they've done their job, and we need to do ours.
Any other questions?
Yeah, I have a few more. Um, so, my other question is, I noticed that we're using a hundred and sixty-five thousand, seven hundred seventy-eight dollars from the reserve. Um, a hundred and sixty-five thousand, seven hundred seventy-eight dollars from the reserve fund? I mean, not reserve fund, from our reserve. Uh, why wouldn't we use our, our line of credit instead? Um, if we use our reserve fund, technically, we don't have to pay it back. So therefore, we don't owe anybody. If we use a line of credit, that will make us obligated to pay them back. Uh, instead of, because what I don't want to happen is we keep using the reserve money that we have put away, and one day, when there's a real emergency, we won't have anything to cover it. So, that's just one of my questions as well, uh, of that piece. Uh, my next question is, so in the budget, there, it, it says right here, directive economic development, thirty-four thousand. But to somebody's point earlier, I saw the, an ordinance and a discussion for next week that we're gonna talk about possibly eliminating the position, so. So, oh, okay, today. So, how do you do that? Why would you put that in the budget if you know that we're not gonna have it? That, I mean, that just, it just doesn't make sense. So we put the position in the budget, we're gonna get rid of next, possibly next week. Can somebody answer that?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes?
I'd like to reiterate for the third or fourth time why that is in the budget the way it is because that position has already been filled for the first six months of the year. The budget is an annual budget. It's a twelve-month budget. For six months of the budget year, someone was in that position. So therefore, we have to put that amount of money in the budget for the first six months that that person was in the position. It's been stated several times. It's a, it's an annual budget, and that's six months of annual budget.
Okay.
Trustee.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, I understand what you're saying, trustee Williams. However, since that thirty-four thousand is gone for the first six months, we're on the second half of the six months. But what, does that mean that she, what's gonna happen to her position? Is it being eliminated?
Trustee.
Excuse me?
She's gonna probably move her to econa- uh, community development.
Who's, so, oh, so that's, so we're moving her to director of community development for twenty-four thousand?
Which is also why I have to hear her.
Okay, so, got that. Okay. So, the director of community, community development, that's her position. Got it. Now, I've heard numerous times the position about a building and co-director. What is that? And where is it in the budget?
I did not see it in the budget. It was mentioned, and I never found it.
And also, uh, madam clerk, uh, do we have to create an ordinance to establish that position, or do it is already established?
It's a position already, uh, exists, so we have to research it. Can you give us a mic? We can't hear you.
I'm so sorry. Forgive me. I said that we would need to research. We were told that the position for the building and co-director is already in the ordinance. So now, it's up to someone to research to see exactly where it is and also the parameters of that position.
Thank you. So who's gonna research that and bring that back to the board? Because in this budget, there's not a salary for that position. So therefore, we're gonna automatically have, you say you have somebody in mind, so we're gonna have to amend it already, and we haven't even voted on it yet. So why not just wait? Because there's numerous things wrong with this budget as it is.
Mr. Mayor.
Trustee.
Director of community development exempt position twenty-four thousand, half-year salary of a forty-eight thousand dollar salary. It's on the same page as it was when we talked about it a few minutes ago. That salary is in the budget at forty-eight thousand. It is expended at twenty-four thousand because it's a position that's being brought back, and it only is at a, bringing it back at twenty-four thousand because it's only gonna be in the position for six months. Again, it's a half of the budget that has to expend. Forty-eight thousand dollar salary, twenty-four thousand is expended in the budget. It's right there under director of economic development, which is expended for thirty-four thousand for the first six months of the twelve-month budget. Everything is right there.
Trustee.
I answered the trustee's question.
I'm asking you a question, but you just made a statement that these two insert are only for six months. Is that correct?
Yes.
Then how is the director of finance and the, and the, um, village administrator at ninety thousand?
Or the public works on anybody, please, chief.
If that's six months, if that's true.
No, Mr. Mayor, I'm sorry. If that's what, that's what you thought I said. What I said was, this is an annual budget, a twelve-month budget. The director of finance salary never changed from the beginning of the budget to the end of the budget, and neither did either of the other ones you just mentioned. I'm talking about the ones where the positions are changed within the budget year. That's when you have to expend for the first six months and what was paid out for the first six months and what's going to be paid out in the second six months. Now you're bringing in the director of finance, who we still don't have after almost two years. That's expended at eighty thousand.
We've had, well, we've had two director of finances, so don't say that again. There you go being
Mr. Mayor, you asked me a question.
Being facetious, trustee. Don't sit up and say that, but it's okay for you to say.
The eighty thousand dollars in the budget, that salary was not amended.
The question I asked you, you just stated that the director of economic development that's in this budget and the director of community development that's in this budget are for six months. You just stated that. This thirty-four thousand and twenty-four thousand was for six months. So therefore, I'm asking, the director of finance and the, uh, village administrator is, is, is here for ninety and eighty thousand. Is that six months, or is it a year for that and six months for the other? How are we supposed to know the difference?
Okay.
Well, we don't have a director of finance, so we had to put eighty thousand in for that, 'cause we don't have one. So it's gotta be built in the budget, 'cause we don't have one.
I didn't, that's not the question I asked.
But you're, you're saying, why is yesterday, what is this for?
I'm asking why is one six months and the other one's a year?
Because the position was split in between the year, Mr. Mayor.
You said what?
Can I explain this one more time?
You've explained it three times.
Yeah, and you still haven't got it.
But you, but you haven't answered the question.
Okay.
You're saying that the director of economic development, the amount that's in this, on this page, is for six months. That's what you stated. You stated that it was a six-month salary. Now you're, and I'm asking you, so that's six months, but what about the ones for, uh, uh, village administrator? Is that six months, or is that a year?
Would you like me to address you, Mr. Mayor?
I
I'd be happy to answer it again. I've already answered it. It's been asked and answered. Village administrator is a full position that is in the budget for a full twelve months, regardless of whether or not anybody was in that position at the time. Okay, this, this budget started May first. We are now October. Okay? That is an eighty thousand dollar a year position. We are not altering that position. I've said it before and I'll state it again. The department of economic development director that was paid sixty-eight thousand was in that position for six months. That's six months in this budget. The, the, the department of community development, which is going to take the next six months, is in the budget for the amount for the next six months. It's two entirely different positions. One has already served six months. It's in the budget. One will be serving the next six months. It's in the budget. You're, you're missing, now you're bringing in a finance director, which is absolutely nothing.
So you're telling me that the village administrators that you have in here, that's a six-month salary?
I never said that.
But then why, then why, then why is one a six-month, the other one is not?
Okay, Mr. Mayor, if you want, if you, if you really want me to explain it again.
Never need you to explain it. I don't need you to explain it, trustee. I'm need you to quit going back and, and telling me that one thing is one way and the other one's another ways. That's what I don't need you to do. You can sit there and explain all you want. It still does not say that, you said that the thirty-four thousand for director of economic development was a six-month salary because it was already six months into the budget. That's what you stated.
Yes.
So my question is, how can we determine the difference between that and the village administrator, which is noted here at ninety thousand? I'm asking you, is that six months? Since we're six months into the budget. You stated no, but it's on the same page.
Mr. Mayor, this is a
No, no, but that's, but that's
You asked me a question, Mr. Mayor. Am I recognized or not?
There's any other questions, trustee?
Uh, yeah. So, again, so the director of, wait, so the building and co-director. Where is that in the budget? Trustee, you mentioned it. You said the director of economic, director of community development. I said, where is the building and co-director position, line item, in the budget? 'Cause you mentioned, somebody mentioned that tonight.
The mayor mentioned it.
I did. I asked about it, and they said it always was, it was always
It was
in the, um, ordinance, but it wasn't filled, and that's, you know, so.
Correct. Okay, that's fine, but it's, again, somebody said they have somebody in mind, but it's not in the budget. So therefore, what are you, are you gonna add it, amend it later? It's not in the budget right now. That position is not in this budget.
Anybody wanna answer their question? Okay, any other questions?
Uh, yes. Um. So, back to, so back to the director of community development. So, we're getting rid of the director of economic development position. Got it. So the director of community development, that would be the person who used to be the director of community economic development. Is that correct going forward? Is that right? Okay. Got that.
You got some more?
No, that's it.
Hearing from the, um, any other questions?
No.
Madam Clerk, please call the room.
Trustee Brewer.
Yes.
Trustee Grant.
No.
Trustee Duzinski.
Yes.
Trustee Todd.
Yes.
Trustee Williams.
Yes.
Trustee Bell.
Yes.
Okay, at this time, I'm issuing a notice of veto. Do you really feel that it's funny? That's a shame. Anyway, I dare verge it in my capacity as newly-elected mayor of Soft Village pursuant to the Illinois state statute to hereby declare my intentions to veto this ordinance approved by the board of trustees at the next meeting, October twenty-second. And that notice has been hereby delivered to the village clerk for the veto mess- message to be placed upon the agenda and delivered at the next regular meeting of board of trustees on October twenty-second. The reasons for my veto will be determined in my veto message to the board